We don't spend enough time in our generation thinking about government and governance and leadership. I mean, there's a lot out there about leadership, but it's usually about corporate leadership or, you know, personal growth. It's not about how do you organize yourself as a community?
Hey, everybody. Thanks for tuning in to another episode of the four, three, five podcast. I am your host, Robert McFarland. I hope you guys had a great weekend for the fourth of July. Everybody was safe. Today's episode, we had a great guest, Washington County Commissioner Victor Iverson. We really dug into the complexities of what it really means to manage this community. The different facets of city government, state government, federal government, the county. It definitely will give you some insights as to how things get run around here. We hope you enjoy this episode. To continue to support us, we really appreciate all the followers, subscribers and love and support we've got recently. Check out our partners in the description below. We'll see you out there, guys. Enjoy the episode.
We're such a growing vibrant county that people move in, they're like, all of a sudden trying to catch up on something that's been going on for a long time. So.
Yeah. So then I had conservative Southwest Utah, I had the executive director Holly Snow Canada on as well. So between those two episodes, I think you can get all of the sides, all the perspectives.
Yeah, no doubt.
So yeah, I got, I got a bunch of downloads and views and listens to those two issues, which was actually encouraging because some of the stuff, some of the interviews I've done, don't, there's not a whole lot of interest in it.
Yeah.
And it seems like when it's really local stuff, when it's really like stuff that where the rubber meets the road, the community really is interested in it and they're going to go seek it out. So I want to keep, I want to keep focusing on that stuff. Our, like the state board, um, out of all the candidates, out of all the interviews I did for all, like even like the, you know, senators and all those, the, the school board interviews.
Got the most attention.
Yeah, those got the most attention, those two things.
Yeah.
So it's, it's interesting to see what people are interested in, interested in what people don't care about at all.
Sometimes when you're in a position like county commissioner or mayor or something, there's these issues that for years you've been working on. And so you kind of assume that everybody else knows about them. Everybody else is probably bored of hearing about them.
Yeah.
Your wife's bored of hearing about it. And so it's like to try to tell that story, but then there's times I'll throw stuff just on my personal social media. And it's, it makes, it reminds me that other people that haven't been a part of that conversation want to hear that information.
Yeah. Yeah. And so this, this is kind of that avenue is like doing these longer form discussions about these topics. So then they live on the internet for a long time. They're not just, you know, a single article that only had, you know, a couple of perspectives. It's you're kind of getting straight to the source.
Exactly.
So how, how long you got an award yesterday for being?
Well, it's kind of a funny thing because we have an employee recognition award that we hand out on certain anniversaries. You know, starting at 10 years and we'll recognize, well, starting in five years, but 10 years is when we kind of recognized and then going up. And so yesterday was actually my 10th year. I wasn't even really paying attention and all of a sudden on a.
That's crazy.
My, we, we trade the chairmanship. And so this year it's Commissioner Almquist, he's the chairman. And so they kind of were joking around and they didn't tell me about it. And so, but I made him go through the whole, you know, let's take a picture and stuff, but.
Nice.
But yeah, 10 years. I was a little bit different because I ran in 2014, but the, the commissioner that occupied my seat before was Denny Drake. He's actually lives here in Santa Clara.
Oh, yeah.
And Denny Drake had been called to be a mission president for the Church of Jesus Christ. And, um, so he was going to Houston. So he left six months prior to his term officially ending. And so I took office in, in July because I had the Republican nomination at that time.
Oh, crazy. So you got in, got in a little early. So that was 2014. And so how long typically do the commissioner seats like run? Is there like a couple of terms? Are they six year terms?
No, it's a four year term. So every four years I need to go up for reelection. So actually in the time that I've served as a county commissioners, there's been quite a bit of change in our, in our county commission.
Yeah.
I think prior to that commissioners served for a long time. I served with Alan Gardner who had served. When he finished two years after I started, Alan Gardner had been there officially 20 years. I served for six months with Jim Erdley, James Erdley, and, um, he'd been there for 16 years. You've probably had Zach Rindstrom on your show.
Yep.
So Zach and I both came in together in 2014. We're county commissioners together. I really enjoyed that.
I forgot he was a commissioner.
Yeah, he was a great county commissioner. And yeah, at that time he was, he's very interested in water and, and, uh, he actually told me, he's like, I, I think I'd really like to be the general manager. And there's nobody that's better qualified to be a general manager of, of the water district than, than Zach. But I had a great opportunity to serve with Zach. Um, later, Dean Cox, um, I served with Dean. Now Dean had been, uh, the county administrator when I first came and, and been in county government for years, been a volunteer, been, you know, Dean passed away, uh, coming on three years this summer. But, um, so I served with him, uh, you know, Alan, Jim, I served with, now I serve with Adam Snow and Gil Almquist. So there's been quite a bit of change in that six years and, and, um.
It seems like that's true almost across the board, even down in the city levels, all the city leadership. A lot of that stuff's turned over in the last five, six years.
No doubt, no doubt. In fact, I've been in state leadership as far as, um, there's an association of counties. And so I was the president of that association and, and, uh, just working with my fellow commissioners, there's been a lot of change in, in local government. And I think it's a generational shift and then it's also just circumstances and people's lives. You know, there's a lot going on in the world right now. So people might be frustrated on a national level, on a state level. And then they, they don't, they don't know exactly where to express that frustration. So sometimes those of us in local government maybe feel it a little bit more.
Yeah.
But we're so blessed. We have a great county, great people live here.
Yeah, we do.
I was thinking, um, I graduated from Hurricane High School. I grew up here, which used to be, you know, everybody grew up here. I like to tell this funny story when I, I was elected a Republican delegate to the Republican convention. I don't know if you've been.
Yep. Yep. I was county, yeah. I'm, I'm a county delegate right now.
Exactly. So I went to my convention or I went to my caucus meeting. There was like six people and they saw me come and they're like, hey, you know, you're young, we're going to elect you and, uh, and send you.
Exactly what happened to me.
Exactly.
They're like, I nominate this guy. I was the youngest guy in the room.
Yeah.
So I was like, I think based off me being the youngest guy in this room, I should probably be a delegate. That's, that was like my speech. It was essentially that. It was like, well, I'm kind of representative of a demographic that doesn't exist in this room. So I guess I should be probably at least one of them, if there's two.
I'm, I'm actually glad you stepped up because I honestly believe that we need to have a multi-generational process. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Like even today, when you look at the national scene and, and I, I love President Trump. I'm just going to acknowledge that I think his policies are, are good. And, um, but they both represent a generation that, that's almost.
Done.
Maybe the torch should be passed sometimes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
But anyway.
Crazy to think that, um, Clinton and, I mean, obviously Obama, but I think Clinton and Bush are younger than Trump. I think, uh, Bill Clinton and Bush junior are younger than Donald Trump.
Interesting.
Isn't that crazy?
That is crazy. You know, he.
And thinking of like leadership, our, our presidential leadership, you think it's that, I always think of a certain generation. Reagan seemed like he was the outlier for the most part. And now, right now, he's like, he's the young guy too. Reagan was even young compared to Trump and Biden. So it's, it's, it's really odd.
Yeah. I grew up during that first Reagan campaign where, where he made that wisecrack to Mondale, you know, I will not hold the youth and, and inexperience of my, my opponent against me because they were starting to make it age difference.
Yeah.
With, with Reagan. But anyway, back to being elected at, at 23 to be this county delegate and just kind of tell you where our county's been. So I, I go to my first convention, this would have been 94. And I can remember as I would, as I was there, people would come up to me and, hey, hi, how, you know, how are you doing? And then they'd immediately want to know who my parents were. And so you could just see them tracking my genealogy.
Yeah.
And that was the way the county used to be, right? But, but we've grown so much. I mean, we probably would have been 50,000 then, and now we're at what 200,000.
Yeah.
And what's, what's interesting is it's not just the 200,000, it's our visitors that were here. So at any one time, this county has, uh, you know, up to 260,000 people in it.
Yeah.
You know, when you talk about everybody that's here visiting and stuff.
Yeah.
And I'm sure as residents, we sometimes feel that it's like, where the heck did all these people come from?
Yeah, it seems like it used to be only a couple of weekends a year. And then now it's like, well, pretty consistently in, in July. Now things slow down. It's definitely quiet.
Yeah.
It's easy to go get, go to a restaurant, you know, and things like that. But most of the weekends on the, on the, on the fall and the spring, it's, it's, we're busy. We're, we're a full county.
We really are.
And it influences the culture of, of what happens here and at the county level. And that's why I'm really interested to talk to you and even Gil, but I've, I've had Adam on before, but understanding like the role of like what the county government is, is really intended for, especially for a county that so much of it is publicly owned. And so we have, you know, these small pockets of private, um, use, you know, how, how does the county look at the, look at our map as a whole and say, how do we utilize our resources and, and blend these towns together? It seems like a, a big job, but I'm not quite sure if the, the role of the county is as strong as it is in other states. So I guess I'm trying to understand like, what is, what does that role really look like for 260,000 people at any given time, you know?
You know, that's a great question. Of course I love county government, but a lot of times, obviously everybody's familiar with their national government. It's, it's always on the news.
Yeah.
And then state government and then our city government, a lot of people understand, you know, we have a city manager, we have a city mayor and city council, but then what does this county do? And so, um, just to give everybody kind of a quick, you know, explanation of what county government is.
At least in Utah, right?
Yeah. In Utah and in Washington County, because there are different forms in, in a few of the counties and I'll, I'll talk about that really quickly. But yeah, in Washington County, there's three of us county commissioners.
Okay.
And so myself, Gil Almquist and Adam Snow, and we serve as both the legislative executive and managers of the county. And so it is a full-time job. We're the fifth largest county. But what I have to remind everybody is there's actually nine elected county officials. So unlike city government, you know, your sheriff is elected Nate Brooksby, your county attorney Eric Clark that you've had on the show.
Right.
He's elected, they both have responsibilities back to the voter. Our assessor, Tom Durant, you know, you want to make sure all of your property taxes are assessed correctly. Our clerk.
Hot button.
Yeah, exactly. Our clerk auditor, Ryan Sullivan. Now that's where we've combined the office. That's why, you know, some counties would have both a clerk office and an auditor office. Eventually we might divide that because that, that is getting to be a big job. Our recorder, I mean, you're in real estate, you know how important recording deeds are. And so you want that person to be accountable to the people as well. So we actually have the recorder slash surveyor. We don't have an elected surveyor. And then we have a treasurer, David Whitehead. You want to make, you have to divide your funds, you know, your, your spending. And, um, hopefully I've named everybody, but.
Yeah, I think, I think you got most of everybody.
But anyway, that's a, that's county government. We have, you know, we have certain responsibilities back to the voters. Now, when it comes to land use and zoning, county commissioners are only responsible for unincorporated areas. So Vail, um, you know, Brookside, Damron Valley, Diamond Valley, most of New Harmony, there is a small, you know, the town of New Harmony, but when you drive through New Harmony, most of that is in the county. So we're responsible for all those municipal services. Anything countywide is usually falls under the county commission. So the sheriff runs a jail, but that's a huge part of our county budget.
Right.
And then of course, um, our library system, we run that. Council of Aging, if anybody's been to our senior centers, um, that we have in, in St. George Enterprise, Hurricane, you know, Mills on Will, some things you don't even think the county government would be doing, we do. And then we're involved in most of our regional planning processes.
So like in the city, like the five cities, you know, you know, as far as like infrastructure planning and things like that, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. So there's, there's an organization called the Metropolitan Planning Authority. It, money comes to the state, department, through the US Department of Transportation, then it comes down, it's actually, it's actually housed at five county.
Okay.
But then we meet together. And so the county, Washington County is really good at convening, um, discussions, convening, planning processes. Does that make sense? That's the reason we're heading up the northern corridor process. Because most of that's in, almost all of that's inside the city limits.
Right.
But in order for it to really work, you gotta have somebody just at the tip of the spear.
Right.
And so that's really where we're at. And we're also responsible for a lot of special service districts, but not completely. What we, we appoint a lot of board members. So, you know, Washington County Water Conservancy District Board is appointed by county commission, by the county commission. And once we appoint that board though, we don't really control it.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, we're pretty proud of the fact that Washington County, we, um, we have the lowest mill levy tax rate. I mean, it might not feel that way when you pay your taxes.
Mill, mill levy tax rate?
So basically the lowest tax rate.
I should probably know what that is.
Yeah, don't, it's, you know, I don't want to get into the whole weeds of, of how your tax rates are, um, are calculated. But for anybody listening to this podcast, when you get a document from the assessor's office that,
Yeah.
you know, says, hey, property tax, this is not a tax. And most of the time it's like, well, if it's not a bill, I'm not going to look at it.
Right.
What you really should do is open that up and take a look at it. And, uh, because we, it's really important that we get that straight. But you'll notice that, you know, the biggest one's school district, you have state, state board of education, stuff like that. But in, in Utah, uh, Washington County's portion of that is the lowest of the state.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
So we try to run.
Their portion of.
Yeah. Yeah. We try to run a really frugal, you know, county, you know, we try to, I say that I'm, I'm a conservative and, um, I say that we need to have a conservative, limited government, but effective. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
Like you can't, it's one thing to just say, you know, government shouldn't ever do anything.
Right.
We know that we need streets, we need parks, we need culture, we need things that make a community worth living in.
Yeah, special programs.
Yeah.
There's, there's things that when, when things arise, challenges arise, like people are building, you know, pickleball like tournament courts out in, you know, unincorporated leads with lights and they're like, whoa, whoa, whoa. You, this, you're disrupting all of these people around you. You have to start setting in, you know, rules and standards. Like, you know, the, the point of government is to, you know, help benefit the, the general group of people. They have to take into account all the sides of it. It's a tough job, super tough job.
And a lot of times in county government, we end up with those responsibilities, right? And you brought up pickleball courts. So I know a lot of people will see the Greater Zion brand.
You've, you've probably.
Great brand.
Yeah, they crushed it.
Yeah. I mean, well, when you're looking at how to market your area for visitors, there's 35 Washington counties in the United States. And then if you were to say.
Every time I type in Washington, I have to type in Washington County, Utah, because if you put in Washington and even just Washington, Utah, you still get Oregon and, you know, Michigan and all these other places. Yeah.
That's what happens when you're the first president of the United States.
Yeah.
You won the Revolutionary War. A lot of, you know, a lot of things get named after you. So. Anyway, and then if you said something like, come to Southern Utah, that's everything south of Richfield.
Right.
So.
Exactly.
So we came up, we actually, this branding process happened when I was a county commissioner. And that's when we come up with the Greater Zion brand. But I think for your listeners, they need to understand that whenever somebody comes to a hotel, um, they're going to pay a tax and, and a portion of that tax is going to go back to the city. The city gets like 1%. Uh, we get a portion that comes back to the county. It's called TRT transient room tax. And this is just like one thing that the county handles. But when you see the county, you know, you might read in the St. George news or somewhere, the county gives St. George City, you know, $3 million for pickleball courts. And they're thinking, man, are they taking my property tax and building pickleball courts? That seems like a waste of government money. Really what it is, it's that tourism tax that comes to the county. And a portion of that has to be spent in marketing because that was the way the legislation was written.
Yeah.
And then another portion of that can be used for what we call brick and mortar or, uh, tourism related assets. Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes total sense.
And so what we, we made an agreement or we made a decision, it was actually when I became a county commissioner, that we wanted to take the, some of those taxes and, and make infrastructure that would benefit our entire communities.
Yeah.
And.
Not just for tourism, but for like permanent visitors as well.
Exactly.
This, this will work for tourism and it'll work for our permanent residents.
Exactly. Exactly. It's just like, for example, you know, we're, we're not sitting too far from, um, is it Snake Hollow?
Yeah, yeah.
And so Snake Hollow was put together by, by the city of St. George. But we took some of those tourism dollars, I think well over a million dollars and gave towards the building that.
Awesome.
Yeah. And the BM tracks.
BMX tracks.
That, that, uh, Santa Clara put in the same thing.
Yeah.
Baseball lights, you know?
Yeah.
Even things like paving some of the, um, some of the parking lots here on some of the softball courts around us. So.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's, that's something that we do do. So when you see, or when people in Washington County see the Greater Zion brand, they can think that's Washington County.
Yeah.
We're just using some of our marketing dollars to do that. Like the university could have never built the stadium without the help of the county.
Absolutely.
And so, because the state of Utah doesn't fund stadium builds. And so they had to go raise money. And, uh, we did a marketing branding agreement with them using some of the, uh, Greater Zion dollars for that.
And, and it's, it's interesting because you look at the, the requirement or, or the idea of saying, hey, we want to raise, we want to raise taxes on the visitors that are coming here so that it can benefit the community.
Yeah.
Right? But also to be able to handle all the visitors that have come in. And so it's interesting to me how big, where's the, what's the annual revenue from that TRT tax at this point? I think it was, it was pretty huge.
It's about $15 million.
It was a lot bigger than I think was early anticipated on how fast it would accumulate that much. Was that right?
Yeah, there's actually, yeah. So in 2019, we had a big year. We thought, oh, that's, that's a big year. And, and then when this pandemic stuff hit in 2020, we're at first, I can remember just going, we have no idea how this is going to work out. Washington County, we stayed true to our culture when, during that pandemic. And we stayed open because that's the type of people that live here.
Yeah.
It's the type of people that live kind of freedom minded. And so, um, and we were, the result of that though, everywhere else being closed down is we had this enormous TRT year.
Yeah.
And then we thought, well, it's going to die off. It, it's obviously not seeing the growth that, that we saw that year, but we stayed really, we have a very robust visitor economy. And kind of back to the, the discussion on this is that I see that as a burden. Like it's a burden when a busy weekend, you're trying to get across town. There might be a marathon, there might be senior games, there might be an Ironman. And, um, we wanted to take and, and make that as beneficial for our county as possible. So that's the reason we continue to invest with the cities. We, we help the cities. We don't build this infrastructure usually. It's usually the cities.
Right.
But that's where the counties, you know, putting millions of dollars towards trails, millions of dollars towards other things. So the citizens can have a quality of life as we grow. Right? And so.
Well, one of the, one of the things that, uh, concerns me about the TRT is that caveat that's a portion of the money has to go back into marketing.
Yeah.
To continue to drive additional visitors, right? And I think it, uh, on the onset, it makes a little bit of sense. It's like, well, hey, we got to use the money that we're getting from that to help fund and, and grow that portion of the economy. But I feel like are we, have we crossed over? You go back to Vision, Vision Dixie, this idea that we're going to be an outdoor community, that, uh, resort and tourism is going to be a key economic driver to get St. George and then surrounding areas into that next, you know, era of town, right? You went from basically 1920 to 1970 where nobody left, it barely grew, right? And then in the seventies, you get a bit, a little bit of a push, but this is kind of when, when this resort economy was kind of hatched. And now we've kind of lived through a generation of that and we're seeing massive fruit from that setup. Have we, have we put too many eggs in that basket?
Yeah.
Do, do you feel like we have?
Well, I sit on the state tourism board and, and this is a conversation that is going live all across the state, right? State legislators having it, you know, different, different people are.
I'm glad I'm not the only guy thinking about it.
No, no, you're not the only guy. And, and it's something that crosses our mind. I will tell you that there's some bad examples of stopping advertising. I mean, you understand marketing, you understand how it is to always be putting your message out in front of people.
Consistency.
Yeah, consistency. And so we've seen states like Colorado that really pulled back on their marketing. And that visitor economy immediately felt the impact. And so I think it's a, I think it's a healthy discussion to have. I think it's one that we need to proceed very cautiously doing because if you pull back on it, you might completely take, um, undercut that, that entire economy. And so we, that's where an argument that I'd make that, that Washington County in particular, we're trying to be very judicious and, and think this through. That's where we're taking like some of those marketing dollars that you're talking about. Cause it's like 47% of this TRT. So 47% of that 15 million has to be spent in marketing.
Yeah.
Now with that marketing, we pay.
I'm glad you knew the stat because I'm like, it's a huge percentage, but I can't, I didn't want to quote it, but yeah.
So with that, we do hire our staff, like, like we do have a marketing, um, arm. With that, for example, some of those marketing dollars went into the Horizon Film Rebate Program that Kevin Costner just, you know, you know, filmed. So some of that is going, and, and part of it, you have to remember is that tax originally was in kind of almost self-imposed by the hospitality industry.
Right.
They went to the state, they said, we need to have.
They lobbied for it.
They lobbied and, and a part of that agreement was these marketing dollars would be spent.
Yeah.
Some of those dollars, for example, we pay $700,000 a year towards the airport because that's a, that's a tourism asset. I think we need to be careful. There's a reason why Coca-Cola and Pepsi, after a hundred years, continues to spend a huge amount advertising. So I totally think it's a valid question. And, um, and I think we need to have that dialogue as a community. Um, I'm not like, I don't own a hotel. I don't own a restaurant. I respect people that do. But I think we need to be cautious on pulling back that money, um, too quickly. Or so where we've kind of gone is we're starting to say, why don't we use some of that money to make sure we're, we're more focused? So for example, let's take an event like senior games. I mean, they got more registration this year than they've ever had.
Really?
It's a great, yeah. And here, you know, but we don't feel the impact as much when senior games is here as in Ironman. And I'm going to kind of break it on your show. Hopefully Ironman, people aren't listening, but I think they already know. We only have one more year in our Ironman contract. We're going to be asking ourselves, and we're actually having meetings set up with our city partners to say, have we outgrown Ironman?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because, and, and I love what iron, you know, you look at Ironman when the video of Ironman, you know, going up Snow Canyon and stuff. I mean, it looks beautiful.
It does.
But can we really box in citizens for an entire day?
Yeah.
And frankly, Ironman would like to go two days.
Right?
A lot of people keep asking about Sunday. You know, we have kind of a culture in our community and, and, and county's not willing to go into Sundays. You know, we just, it's just not who we are.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not that we, if people want to do whatever they want to do on Sunday, but, but we're not going to be a sponsor to an event that takes over Sunday, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So anyway, that's kind of where we are. It's a, um, the visitor economy is a, is a, is a vibrant discussion across the state.
So going back to the TRT and, and doing it towards marketing. So one of the thoughts I had was, you know, I, I get as a percentage of the total revenue, especially when you're setting it up, right? The hospitality industry, they're thinking, okay, well, if, if the marketing dollar, it's less marketing dollars I have to spend. So when I charge the, the client, you know, this extra tax because it goes on their bill and it looks like I'm charging them even though it's a tax, right? That, that way I'm counting on the county to take that money and then spend it for me.
Yeah.
Right? And then collectively as a group, we're going to have more tourism. It might not be able to drag it directly to my business, but there's just going to be a bigger pool of visitors here and they're going to use it as a percentage of what that, that dollar, uh, value is. So then you, you take that for an example though, and, and now you say, you know, the fourth of July, I just saw a notice that Zion National Park is, you know, like extremely long lines, like it's going to be a zoo out in Springdale. So there's a, there's a carrying capacity for Springville, Springdale. So no matter how much more money we spend on telling people to come to Springdale, at one point it's full. And, and now that dollar is not having the same impact as it would, would if that dollar was spent otherwise. So my thought is, um, and, and obviously this has to go through the legislature because it's, it's a change to the way that money's being spent. But it seems to me like infrastructure is something that should be linked to that at some capacity, right? Because we need that infrastructure to handle those, you know, visitors, but also as we continue to grow as it, as a community.
Yep.
Is that something that they've kind of kicked around or has that ever been discussed?
Yeah, actually I think that I was told by Neil Walters, Representative Walters and others, they are looking at more and more flexibility on TRT. And so I, I fully expect them to give flexibility. I just think we need to be careful. I was always told by some, I told you all the county commissioners I served with.
Yeah.
Some of the older county commissioners always said, be careful opening up the box of TRT because it, it's Pandora's box. Other words, once you open it up, does it just become a general tax and then you don't use it for any tourism infrastructure? But everything you mentioned is, is a part of an ongoing dialogue right now. I do think that we do have a capacity, right? The, we can't just keep stuffing more and more people into, um, visitors here, you know, it, people, it starts to affect our quality of life and we don't want it to affect our quality of life. So I will say this, people ought to know there is something set up under state statute called the Tourism Tax Advisory Board, TAB Board. And that's made up of people from the industry that make recommendations on the expenditures of TRT. So there is kind of this checks and balances. The commission has to approve it. The county commission approves it, of course, but. And if you've had Adam Snow on the show, you've talked about the dialogue with Zion National Park. And we've been going the rounds with them. They want to create some sort of registration system. A lot of us locals, I'm going to openly admit, we don't visit National Park because we don't like to deal with the bureaucratic process of, you know, we'd rather go to, there's so many other places we don't have to have a, a park ranger tell us where to, you know, what to do and everything.
Yeah, we're not having, we're not having to shuttle from our car to the shuttle to go up into the canyon. When in December, we can just drive up into the canyon, you know, it's like, there's just, when we first moved here, we were there all the time.
Yeah.
But then as it's gotten busier and busier, I don't think I've been there in two years now at this point. It's been a while.
Now, tell me, you didn't, you grew up, did you grow up back east or Midwest?
So I grew up in Sandy, up in Salt Lake. And then my wife and I moved here from California. We, I spent ten years in California with my wife and we moved here in 2015.
Yeah. You and I were at an event together. I don't know if you remember. I think it was the Children's Justice.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
At the ledges, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Dinner or something like.
Yeah, that, and that's another great program that the, the county takes a big, big role in as well, but.
Well, and I think just kind of jumping and I, we're kind of jumping around.
This, yeah, this is the thing, this is what I do a lot of times.
But you know, the county does a lot of that. And, and I would like to think, and of course, you know, we started off saying, I've been here a county commissioner, county commissioner for 10 years. I'm proud of what we've accomplished in that time. But what I'm really proud of is, is a heritage that we have in Washington County that's, that's somewhat unique where we work together. And, and what that means is the county really tries to, you know, work with the cities and we have great city leaders. And those city leaders also, you know, try to do what's mutually good. So, you know, you take somebody like Crest Daily over in, in Washington City. I mean, he's obviously looking out for Washington City, but he's also very accommodating to help the county or.
For those who don't know, Crest is the mayor of Washington.
Mayor of Washington City. And of course, St. George City is kind of the big one, right? Because there's ninety, out of our two hundred thousand residents in the county, ninety plus thousand living in St. George.
Yep.
And yet St. George is, they don't throw their weight around, you know, they, they really do collaborate and help out. So as somebody who's very familiar with kind of the state politics, you know, and understanding other counties and cities, this is something unique in our county. And I think it's something that the residents of Washington County should be proud of. And it's also something that somebody listening to this podcast outside of the area who might be thinking, you know, why is my county or why is my government not working the way it should? It's, it might be because people aren't working together.
Yeah.
And, and you can do that and still be true to your values, whether you're conservative or more moderate, you know, person. So.
What, what made you want to get into the, the commissioner role? What, what did you go to school for? What, how'd you get to where you're at?
Well, that's an interesting story. I actually grew up here, like I mentioned, always been interested in politics. My, my family were always very civic minded, very freedom minded. My, my dad was an old, you know, rancher. He grew up on Arizona Strip. I don't know if anybody's been there, but it's a, I can remember going out there with him and he used to, my dad was older than I am. So right, my dad was a World War II veteran. So I was the last of, of his, of his kids. I'm the youngest, obviously.
The youngest of how many?
Uh, seven.
Seven.
It's a mixed family.
Yeah, yeah.
And, but I remember him talking about Bundyville like it was the Garden of Eden. And it's like eighty miles out. It's like out towards the Grand Canyon. There's nothing out there, but they used to go out and dry land farm. And I remember going out there and he was talking about all the different homesteads and where different people lived. And I just looked at it and I was like, Dad, this is the most godforsaken country I've ever seen, you know? How come we came out here? And he just shrugged and said, you know, back during the thirties, there, we were in a wet cycle in this, this region. You could dry land farm. It was great ranch country when it gets rained on. So anyway, I grew up in a very civic minded home. I love the heritage and history of our county. I really do. And I just.
It is so fascinating.
Yeah.
It's so fascinating, our history.
I wanted to just give back and, and I, I am, you know, so that's kind of my motivation, my why, if you will. And just how do I kind of carry the torch? And I sometimes joke around and say, you know, I didn't want to screw it up, you know? Once you're in leadership, you don't want to be the, the, the weak link that screwed things up. And so that's really kind of my motivation. But anyway, you ask, I went to college. I was going to go to law school like probably everybody.
Me too.
Everybody wants to go be a lawyer. I'm kind of glad I didn't.
Yeah.
And.
I couldn't get into law school. So that was, that was my, I took the LSAT three times. I wanted to go to University of Chicago or George Washington to law school and I couldn't get my LSAT score high enough.
Or you were shooting high.
So I was shooting high. I was, I could have gotten into some law school, but I didn't want, you know, I, I did a bunch of research. I talked to a bunch of different attorneys and, you know, there's tiered law schools, right? There's tier one, two, three. You can go, you know, become a divorce attorney and go to, you know, a
Yeah.
inexpensive law school, but that's not what I wanted to do. And so when I couldn't get the minimum score high enough, I just scrapped it. I just like, well, I'm, I guess I'm not supposed to be an attorney, which I'm really glad that I scrapped that idea because I don't think.
Hey, I'm just curious, what generate, or what year was that that you were trying to get into law school?
So I think two thousand seven is when I graduated college. So it would have been six, six and seven. I was taking LSATs, yeah, two thousand seven.
And if you remember what happened in two thousand eight.
Oh, yeah.
With the market crashing and then so many students right during that time, law students, there was, there was national articles about how people couldn't get jobs.
Yeah.
And then what's actually happened in real time is that people quit going to law school. And so now as the county commission, we're trying to get public defenders. We're trying to get people to apply for our county attorney's office. And there's just not enough lawyers now.
Oh, wow.
So we're actually kind of in a lawyer deficit where we used to kind of be in a surplus. But anyway, I'm.
It's so funny. That's interesting.
You went into real estate and stuff. When I graduated from college, I went to, I went to Dixie. It was two years at the time. And then in S U, graduated political science, history degree. And, but I was married by then and I was also working in the trades. I grew up, you know, lay in block, brick, stone, a mason. And I was contracting by the time I graduated from high school or from college. And so I always joke around, I had a choice to go to law school or, or be a brick mason.
Yeah.
And so I, I, you know, when you're making good money and you're young.
Yeah.
And it seemed like a kind of a logical landing spot for right then. I, I stayed in the, in the trades for about thirteen years. And then I was always really active in politics. So helping candidates that I cared about, working on campaigns. And I ended up going to work for, it's a funny story. Mike Lee, who's a US Senator now.
Yep.
He and I were both, he was student body president at BYU when I was student body president at Dixie College. And there's this association on state level.
Yeah.
For student body presidents that year. And so we actually knew each other from that association.
Okay.
And I helped him on his campaign and then he asked me to come and do public lands. And I, that was kind of my forte, right? Public lands. I come from a family, like I mentioned, of ranchers and stuff. And so I did, I did congressional work. I was senior with the policy advisors, what they call them. But over public lands and natural resources. And during that time, I interacted with county commissioners across the state, including.
What year was that? When, when, what years were that?
So he was elected in two thousand and ten.
Okay.
And so it would have been for about three years during.
So you were on his, his team, policy team.
Yeah, every, every congressional member has staff. And so I was a part of his staff. And, and so when this opportunity came up, somebody mentioned, hey, Denny Drake isn't going to run for reelection. And so I went home and told my wife I wanted to run for county commission. She didn't tell me at the time, but she's told me since then and she thought I was crazy, right?
Yeah.
But anyway, here we are.
Here you are.
But anyway, that's my motivation.
That, that makes sense. So, so as, as you're, it's a full-time job. I've heard, I've heard people discuss, you know, expanding the commission to five, five members. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm going through this book called American Covenant. And he's talking about the constitution. It's basically the, the preface is that the constitution, if we all just turn back to the constitution and understand the constitution, at, at, at every level of society, right? From the regular citizen, we just start really looking at, okay, our belief is in our constitution. It's not in the, whatever flag is waving. It's not in the person that's sitting in the seat. It's not in the party. It's in this one singular document that everybody's saying, hey, these are things that we can believe in. And then there's these checks and balances that go along with it. And one of the things that it, he's brought up in the Federalist Papers, it was this debate between, you know, the, the failing of a republic at, when they were looking at Rome and how the republic failed there. Their argument, some of the argument was we're too diverse of a, a people group. There's too many cultures. It's, it's too much of a melting pot. And this is in seventeen seventy six, right? We hadn't even, we hadn't even received, you know, eleven million illegal immigrants, right? So, you know, when talking about diversity of populations, there's, there's this debate. As you get closer in local government, you get more consensus and the ability for a republic to do what it's supposed to do works better at a smaller level. And it's harder at a, at a large level. And it was really interesting because as I thought through it, I was thinking about what are our biggest challenges that we're kind of facing just in Washington County, right? Just in our, our little island that we have. A lot of those things are just out of our control. Does, am I right to think that? Like.
Are you talking about the federal levels and stuff?
Well, like the, the issues that we're facing. So energy is an example, right? Is it, is there, at our, at our little local level, do our governing bodies have enough influence to impact affordable housing or energy, right? Or even truthfully, water, right? We're unique as in Utah because of the way our zones are worked and, and Army Corps of Engineers controls all of the water. And, and we have a lot of structure around the water. So it makes us unique and, and gives us, you know, strength at the local level for water. But a lot of these other things that we're kind of out of, out of control on. And I think expanding a commission, you know, making five members versus three, it limits our ability to take control of some of these things because everybody's got a, an opinion that comes into play, right? What, what's your thoughts on, you know, how, how can we continue to impact, you know, at the local level and, and help us sustainably on a long-term, you know, goal and not, not have to give it up to the state? Or should we give some of that to the state and let them decide? I don't know.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate you on being a free thinker and an open thinker to, to things like that book you're reading, the Constitution. And really when we think about, we don't spend enough time in, in our generation thinking about government and governance and leadership. I mean, there's a lot out there about leadership, but it, it's usually about corporate leadership or, you know, personal growth. It's not about how do you organize yourself as a community.
Yeah.
And I, I couldn't agree with you more on the constitution, on the importance of it. And yet one of the things that we face today is that self-governance is, is important to, to having, you know, good functioning self-government. And, but anyway, to your question about an expanded.
I know it's kind of a rambling question.
No, but it, it's good because I believe that the biggest threat to America today isn't necessarily who we elect, but it's the growth and power of the administrative state. And what that means is like, we've empowered every agency of the federal government to make rules and regulations that affect your, our lives in so many different ways. And we have to get rid of that, like it.
Unelected bureaucrats.
Unelected bureaucrats.
Yeah.
And so sometimes when people say, you know what we need? We need, we need an expanded county commission because we need more legislators. And what I'm saying is that as county commission in particular, and, and there is a difference between city and local government or city and state government and county government. But we're both executive and managers and legislators. Does that make sense? And so we just barely had our commission meeting last night and we voted on quite a few different things that we needed to vote on in a public process and a public meeting. But when we're not doing that, somebody needs to make sure that, you know, everything else is functioning properly.
Yeah.
And when people have issues, they know who to call. They, you know, they can call a county commission. They can call an elected official. And so I think it is important that we can, that we empower elected officials because at least us citizens now have an option every four years.
Yeah.
Whereas this administrative state and there, when, whether you grow the city or whether you grow the county or whether you grow the state, if somebody, if an elected official doesn't have direct control over that, you as a citizen don't have direct control over it. But I would say that the county government, especially Washington County, I mean, you know, land use, you're involved in that. That's a, that's a whole nother conversation by itself.
Yeah.
But by and large, simple questions can be answered and solved by people that you are accountable. I, I mean, I, I'm celebrating 10 years as a county employee, but my real boss is, is the voters.
Yeah.
So I have to, you know, every four years I need to go back before them and.
Even if they're wearing a tin hat in your meetings.
If they're wearing a tin foil.
If they're wearing a tin foil hat.
And I, you know, and I don't mind that. Like I have in dialogue with people that are angry with me is, is okay because that's what I signed up for. But.
Yeah.
But I think you're very astute to be asking those types of questions about self-government, about, you know, having direct input into your government. So I, I would hope that we would, that we'd keep our current three man commission. Cause that's why I like to say that there's actually nine elected county officials.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times people think the county government, it's only three of us and it's really not.
Yeah.
We do though, set the budget and the policy for the county. So, you know.
And it's, it's a, it's a, we're in a weird growth stage too, right? So like the difference between going from three to five, what, what is the purpose of that? What would that do to serve? And so my, my thought is at this, at the individual city level, let's say, I'll, I'll talk about specifically the two things that I think I'm, I'm really most interested in is Rocky Mountain Power, just, you know, proposed. I don't even know. I, I'm trying to dig through and understand what are the unelected bureaucrats, like what, how does this system work out with energy? So Rocky Mountain Power proposes that they're going to do a thirty percent increase rate tax on, or a rate increase on all of their, their customers. And calling them a customer is weird because I'm forced to use Rocky Mountain Power. I picked, I bought the house and I'm forced to use Rocky Mountain Power. I don't have another option. So I guess I'm a customer, but I'm more of like a slave to them.
Yeah.
So they're, they're going to propose this thirty percent rate hike and they, they're citing, you know, all these different examples. And I had Lori Mangum on the podcast and we talked, she was the director for energy for St. George City for like 20 years. Insanely smart. One of my favorite conversations because it was, it's really technical and in-depth. But it really kind of shined a whole lot of light on utilities and how important that is and how, you know, the average everyday citizen has no idea how complicated and complex just that one portion of this is. And so part of me thinks, you know, from an energy standpoint, could, should it be taken, am I, am I wrong to think? Is it possible for the individual cities to make the best choices when it comes to power for their constituency? Or does it need to go to the state to help regulate some of these utilities? Cause I think of, of power is like, it's like water and, and shelter, right? At this point.
Yeah, you, you're on to something because for me, one of the things that keeps me awake, obviously water, we're very concerned about water, but also power. I mean, yeah, there's a couple of things. First of all, just our, our power grid, getting power into Washington County, you know? We could have a massive fire that would shut that down. We have obviously Dixie Power that's a co-op that, that if you're in the southern part of.
South Virgin River.
Virgin River, you can get that power and it's usually cheaper than Rocky Mountain. They actually, as a part of their co-op, they have a coal-fired plant.
Up in Vernal.
Up in Vernal.
That was slated to be closed down.
That was slated to be closed.
Thankfully, like him or love him, or dislike him, Governor Cox and I know Derek Brown, who's the presumptive winner, because he's, he's the Republican ticket winner. He, he specifically wants to take that issue straight to federal courts. He's, he wants to stop them from shutting down those coal power.
Yeah, I did. I actually think the state of Utah filed lawsuit on that. Did get a stay on it and.
They're going to continue to fight.
I don't know if you've had Colin Jack on your show.
I haven't had Colin. I keep hearing to have him on.
You need to have him.
I heard he's.
He, he's the power nerd and he's, he's, you know, he's really good at this stuff. But back to Rocky Mountain, there is some state agent or a state board that does regulate those costs somewhat. Other words, they have to make those justifications. I would love to see us own more of our state assets and power or, and some sort of co-op, you know? And you might ask, well, you know, And you might ask, well, you know, the private sector, Warren Buffett owns Rocky Mountain Power, you know? And, and I understand he's actually trying to sell it off or sell some of those assets off. One of the things that makes Utah competitive as an economy is, is our cheap power. And, but we have to quit shutting down these coal-fired plants. We can have clean energy in, in this country. It's, it's better than, than even gas. A lot of, a lot of people started converted to converting to gas, power plants. But the, the energy that's in gas is not the same that's in coal. And so this is one of the, the getting back into my nerdy years with, with Mike Lee. We don't even have a, a national energy policy. And so when you, you bring that back to a local energy, you know, these small cities and, and they are small.
I'm legitimately nervous for Santa Clara. I'm legitimately nervous for Santa Clara because, um, you know, the, them relying on having to go to the open market to purchase power. They're already the second most expensive power in the entire state.
Yep.
They're significantly over the national average. I know, well, I mean, it's, it's weird though, it's weird though, Mal, that it's funny.
As you mentioned that, the lights started to flicker.
I know, right? It, it's just weird that you literally cross an imaginary barrier, an imaginary line. And all of a sudden your electric bill's like, you know, sixty percent less, just because you go from Santa Clara to St. George.
Yeah.
You know, it, it makes me nervous about that, but then it's, it's, does the city actually have the capacity to either A, make the determination that no, we, we, we probably shouldn't have our own utility company. Maybe we need to roll into something else, but what is a better solution? And so for me, I, I couldn't help but think, you know, as, as a county, if I'm, if I'm looking at this map and I'm looking at all our resources, it, it takes me back to when I was a kid and I, I'd play, you know, like SimCity or, you know, these, uh, uh, map games. I've been playing Minecraft with my son, right? And you're like, looking at, okay, well, what are all our resources, right? If we had just settled this land from, you know, Pine Mountain, you got down to Arizona Strip. What are the resources that we have? What can we utilize? You know, if, if we needed water, every man able to carry a shovel and woman, we went up there and they dug a trench, right? And they, and they brought water to Santa Clara. They brought water to Washington City, right? The cotton mill was, the community got out and they did whatever it took with the resources that they had and got the job done. And I can't help but think, how do we get far enough ahead? Like at the county level, I look at, uh, Los Angeles County. Los Angeles County as a whole has grown into, you know, their transportation, the main transportation is all through the county. It's not run through the cities. And so, um, is it, is it difficult for the county to fast forward and just imagine? What is twenty years from now look like, uh, for Washington County? What is transportation, what does public transportation look like? This is another one where I'm like, we, at the city level, I don't think, it's never going to make money. So if, if the city, if, if we know that the city is never going to really be able to make it any kind of a priority, shouldn't the state or the county make it the priority for all of the, the collective cities? Am I wrong, am I wrong to kind of think that?
Well, you, you have two questions.
I know, I'm sorry.
The one question about power, I would encourage everyone to be more aware of power. You know, I love that map or I, I don't love it, but I, I think it explains something of the Korean peninsula at night. Where you see North Korea has like one or two little lights in it. And then South Korea has, is totally lit up.
Yeah.
Power is what drives prosperity and, and if the power went off tomorrow, we would, there are people in this community that would, that would die very soon that are relying on power and not just, not just our AC. So, um, as far as power goes, I will say, I'm, I've always been a friend of, of, uh, of Colin Jack, who's now a representative. His voice is so necessary at the state level because I think in his short time, and nobody really knows this, unless you're really involved, he has moved the state to be so much more proactive on the power production side. And that's kind of more of a state conversation. One thing that the county can do is convene conversations about it. I will say that the cities that do have their own power and I, and I think, um, uh, so that's definitely Santa Clara, St. George.
Washington has its own, but it's, but it's split. And, and I think in a lot of places you could pick Washington or Dixie Power, but then, and then Hurricane has their own power. And they bought into the nuclear power plant in Wyoming.
That never happened.
Or Idaho, Idaho. And it just hasn't happened yet, right? And so it's, they're still moving forward with it, but that's why Lori Mangum had said that she wasn't interested in, you know, buying into this power plant because it was this, it's this really long-term play. And the benefit on the, on the, on the bounce back isn't always going to play out the way we think it's going to play out, right? And so.
What people don't realize is that, first of all, I think solar farms are extremely ugly. And I think, uh, windmills are extremely ugly. But we don't always have sunshine and we don't always have wind.
Right.
And so you always have to have base load power. And so if we're going to convert more and more to electric vehicles, you've got to have a really strong electrical system. And we just don't. I mean, Texas, you know, a lot of people look up to Texas, but they're kind of isolated. I, I was on a conference call the other day where they, somebody from Dallas was there and they were out in their car on their phone because they were out of power. We had that really cold, um, snap a few years ago. All of their, their liquid gas lines that power their power plants froze. And, uh, the whole state went black or at least.
Yeah, and all the solar, like they have so much on solar and well, it's, the sun's not shining. It's a storm, there's a storm across the entire state, there's no power, yeah.
Well, jumping back to, to what the county can do on, on mass transit, we've been having a vibrant conversation.
So to wrap up the power, so there's not, there's not really a conversation around bringing in like, uh, a county level utility? Maybe for like outlying towns or anything like that, like.
It's, it's not in our toolbox or our wheelhouse.
Okay, okay.
I mean, there, there are times that we can engage as an influencer. For example, um, there was a substation that was built down south of the, um, fairgrounds there in Hurricane and what's called Purgatory.
Which we really needed because we only, yeah.
And we were about to have brownouts in that summer and they were having an extremely hard time dealing with fish and wildlife and BLM on getting permission to put the last part of that line across. I happened to be up at the legislature and I happened to see Colin Jack and, and I think Liddell Lob was there. And I was just like, hey, what's going on? He's like, well, you know, if I get this power line through. And so we came back, we immediately got with our, uh, with our congressional staff, started having calls and letters. And the next thing we know, we were able to help them influence the process enough to get it across. So there's times like that that we can engage. Otherwise, outside of just giving what's called a franchise agreement, which you have to do. For example, Rocky Mountain Power has to have an agreement with the municipality for all of their power lines and, and all of their rightaways. So outside of that, we don't have that much influence on power. I have had a lot of these types of conversations with Colin and the state, I think, is going to be more and more proactive on telling companies like Rocky Mountain, you can't shut down that power plant just because you want to, you know, because.
Right.
So power is something we got to keep focused on. I mean, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Um, mass transit, you brought that up. A few years ago, state of Utah appropriated about fifteen million dollars for what they call hot, hotspot funding. It was really to kind of alleviate some of that, um, challenge we had of Zion Canyon. And because I liked our, tell people, Springdale's like the biggest cul-de-sac in the state. You get up there and you have to turn around or, you know what I mean? You can't make it through the park. And so how are we going to fix that problem? We went through a process, it wasn't my first choice. I'm, I wish, my problem with mass transit is that we're kind of addicted to our cars. And I don't think the taxpayers should be paying for buses that drive around empty, right? So if you really can't, if mass transit isn't getting you to where you want to go, you're probably not going to take it.
Right.
And so I, I made the argument and kind of lost, but I said, we should talk to somebody like CJ Wade or somebody that's running, you know, St. George Shuttle and ask them, how do you get people from point A to point B? And how can you do that in a way that's cost-effective? We couldn't quite wrap our head around it. And so we ended up, uh, contracting with Suntran to expand that line. So I think we're about ready to go live after all these years. There's actually a lot of debate over whether to use electric vehicles. We started talking about electricity and all the infrastructure we're going to have to put into it. And we actually got like this three million dollar grant from the federal government to buy Proteris, Proterra buses. And, um, we started getting nervous about it and, um.
Proterra buses are, they're electric buses?
They're brand electric buses. I kept making the argument, I kept saying, I don't know that electric buses are proven technology.
Yeah, like what if, what happens if the battery goes bad? And then now it's like another hundred grand and you gotta get a whole nother battery.
Finally, Cameron Cutler came to me and we were having this.
Who's Cameron?
He, he's the engineer, um, over transportation at, at the city of St. George.
Okay.
And he's like, I just don't feel good about this. Would you be okay if, if we went to just clean diesel? And I was like, that's where I was the whole time.
Yeah.
Well, literally a month or two later, Proteris goes bankrupt. And I'm reading all these articles about like three or four cities that have buses sitting that are dysfunctional.
Oh my gosh.
Kane County got a, a clean air grant to buy one bus. And so they loaded all the county commissioners and mayors on to ride from Canab out to the, the east entrance of the park. They couldn't even make it the whole way, they had to come get rescued. The bus died on the way.
Oh.
So it's just one of those things where we dodged a bullet. Cause can you imagine you want to destroy the public trust? You know, spend five, six million dollars in electric buses and just have them dysfunctional.
Yeah.
So anyway, we're going to.
See, this, this brings up like in my mind, so what, what kind of got me, I'm thinking about this, it was from that proposal that expand the bus line. And I'm like, how is that going to solve any problems? Like it just, in my mind, it didn't, it wasn't going to solve any problems, you know what I mean? I said, you know, because the idea is that they need to have employees be able to get into Springdale because they can't, they don't have a workforce in Springdale to handle the massive, um, you know, visitor ship. So they were, I know Springdale has gone to the county and gone to the state, like, hey, we need help. Like help us with something. We don't, we don't even know exactly what we need, but we need help. And public transportation was part of it. And when I heard buses, I was like, it seems like such as, like, uh, well, we don't have any other good ideas. So let's just run with something that might work, right? And, and I, I couldn't help but think, how, how risky can we be with the decisions in some of these things? You know, thinking outside the box, it's great for me to just, you know, get on a microphone and start talking about all these, you know, crazy ideas. But to that point, you go with an idea that's not proven and then it, it blows up in your face. That's a really painful price to pay to do, to do something outside of the box. And so, you know, clean diesel, that makes a lot of sense. But, you know, looking, looking further down the road, it is, is public transportation even really like a, does it seem like a priority? Because we're so addicted to our cars, is that, does it seem like, is it worth the battle? Is that kind of the perspective you think from, you know, the, I guess the elected officials is, is a collective? Is that, is that a reason why it kind of gets put down on the less of a priority?
You know, as elected officials, we all have our own opinion. I'm kind of one of these people that I would love to see, um, public transit work. I'm very concerned that it won't.
Yeah.
In this particular case, because what you have to do is think about the customer. Like who wants to get to Springdale on mass transit? Well, workers want to get to Springdale on mass transit and maybe visitors that have a hotel. And then as you come through the communities, maybe there's people that need mass transit, you know, um, in the different communities, but then how do we settle the last mile? And I was telling, in dialogues, I was saying, we better have a lot more bike racks. Cause nowadays with electric bikes and stuff.
Yeah.
If you were to get within a mile or two of your location and the bus schedule worked for you, it'd be really easy to just throw on a, you know, a, you know, a scooter or something and, and make that last mile. I worry that the, the ticket cost will be too much and that the schedule will not fit people's schedule. And so therefore, once again, government will have kind of this clunky system that will make us all feel good because we have mass transit. But is it really going to be moving the amount of people we need to clear up the roads? There's no doubt that we cannot continue to build lane miles. Other words, we can't just keep expanding our roads, uh, so much that, you know, for long, they're, you know, six lanes on each way. We just can't do that. And so we, if we can get an, an efficient mass transit, I'm all for it. I travel Mexico quite a bit, you know, and some people are kind of scared of Mexico. I went on an LDS mission down there. So I go into Southern Mexico all the time and I, I've only rented a car one time down there. Um, almost had a near-death experience, but, but, um, I might try that again. But down in Mexico, you can get anywhere with transit, right?
Yeah.
I mean, they have a hundred different ways to travel around.
Yeah, when I, I backpacked Europe. And so I, I think of like, when, I, I didn't need the last mile. I was willing to walk the last few blocks, but it wasn't just one trip. So like this Suntran is like, I can use it to do that one thing, but I can't, there's not really anything else I could do it with. So I can go there, that one place, but if I'm not going to that one place, it's not helpful. It's not helpful, right? You still end up needing a car, which doesn't relieve any of the traffic, right?
And can you afford to, you know?
It has to be an end-to-end.
Yeah.
System.
So say you're paying six or seven dollars a ticket.
Yeah.
You might as well have a car if you're spending twenty or thirty dollars. So I'm hopeful that it'll work. I want to be proven wrong.
This is kind of the argument that conserves Southwest Utah. One of their arguments with the Northern Corridor is like, you know, if, if we all are agreeing that we can't just keep building road miles, can we not do it through a heavily dense, you know, turtle reserve, right? And, and I, I don't disagree with them about that, right? It's, it's, uh, we're on a slippery slope. We do need roads, right? We need roads, but what are the most effective roads that we could build? And then are we, do we have a master, you know, public transportation, uh, framework in our mind? Is that what is public transportation going to look like in twenty years, right? And in my mind, it's, uh, um, autonomous taxi.
Yeah.
Type situations, right? In, in my mind, it's a, it's a vehicle, whether it's on a track or whether it's on the road, but on a designated road.
Yeah.
Um, and there's no driver to it and it comes and goes and you just walk in and there's no driver. You just, you know, punch your destination in and you go. And so if, I, I legitimately think that that's what, what the, the future is, is leaning towards. Getting the cost down, taking the plunge, taking the jump, the leap of faith on saying, okay, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start putting in the infrastructure or the framework of this kind of a public transportation, knowing that big buses don't, don't make a whole lot of sense. But maybe some individual trams that can go anywhere because they just type in the coordinates and they just drive there. And they could be summoned from your phone, you know, and, and if you're a, a citizen of the county, right? You can make it as part of, whether it's part of your tax or whether it's part of a, an annual membership. I, I just, I don't know if, uh, it seems to me like there's not some long-term plan, you know, being put into place, but we kind of need it.
There, there is long-term planning and, and I don't want to sound too pessimistic on, on mass transit. I just want to be.
This is probably boring for most people.
Yeah, they're probably like, why are you talking about a bus that I'm not ever going to ride? I just want to be realistic that, you know, I worry about this, the system that we're going to launch.
Yeah.
And you've probably had people on your show that have expressed similar concerns. But back to your point, we can't keep building roads. We just have to think about the customer and the customer being the citizen. How do they get from point A to point B? And so I hope that we can continue to explore technology. I know that during this dialogue that we've had, I say, we, you know, the county commission is, I, I can remember having multiple mayors in my office in our old building, just saying, what are you going to do? Why are you being the obstacle to, to, you know, expanding mass transit? You need to, to put what's, what was called a quarter percent option, which was going to fund it. I mean, when you have five or six mayors who you like and you want to collaborate with, giving you like really twisting your arm. You start to, well, maybe I'll, I'll think about it. But I know that during that time, for example, we were having dialogue with a company called Via, which is similar to what you're saying. Other words, it's a, it's, it's kind of like an Uber type of technology where the driver in the shorter vans have, have routes. And then you would use that, that app to let them know to pick you up on those routes.
Yeah.
I think we need to do things like that, 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 um, the customers are, are used to that. A lot of people have, almost everybody has a cell phone. Almost everybody has a, has the capacity to, to use an app. And that would make travel a lot easier. At least you would know when the bus was going to get there.
Yeah.
You would, the bus driver would know that he should expect people at that stop. Technology like that, I'm totally in agreement with you that we need to continue to explore. And Mother Nature, this beautiful place that we live in, one of the reasons the Northern Corridor is so needed is that you just can't build roads anywhere.
Yeah.
And so, um, I will say, and I don't want to have a whole nother Northern Corridor conversation, but that four miles is going to be one of the most beautiful roads in the state of Utah. And it's going to be done respectfully.
Yeah.
And I've already said, you know, we're going to put a nice bike track along it. It's going to be a beautiful road.
I'll, I'll say, just, I, I didn't, I don't want to make this a big part of it, but I will say this. I listened to both sides, like it is, I, you know, biased. People will be like, oh, he's biased. Of course I'm biased. Everybody's has their own biases, right? They, we all are coming with our own set of understanding and beliefs, right? But looking at them side by side, my, my, this is my, my unvarnished opinion, the county. The county doesn't care to look at a different option at this point. We've been going down this road so long. We're like, no, this is what we're doing. We've exhausted everything else. We're doing it this way.
Yeah.
Conserve Southwest Utah is, I don't care. We don't want the road. We're going to continue to litigate and sue, 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 sue. Based off of all these statutes and they're going to go to the judges and they're going to continue to fight this out. So we're like banging our head against the brick wall is what I feel like, right? Um, I, I, I wasn't quite sure that the county of the proposed alternatives, if they took them seriously. I didn't get the, the feeling like it was anything that was really all that well investigated because there's so much history. You're like, we've investigated this thing ad nauseam, right? And so that, that's my opinion on, you know, that effort. But where's the compromise? When, when talking to conserve Southwest Utah, it didn't seem like they were willing to compromise really anything. It seems like they were like no road. Period. Doesn't matter, you know, what, what the alternative is.
So conserve Southwest really is coming from this idea that, um, the road shouldn't be there because there's a national conservation area. Um, our argument is there would never be a national conservation area if we hadn't have passed the 2009 lands bill that said that there should be a road through the national conservation area. And so, um, we feel like we really have looked at all the options. We spent, we in the state of Utah spent over seven million dollars on what's called the paperwork. A lot of people.
Yeah.
Called NEPA, you know, you gotta do this when you go through, when you involve the federal government. So we feel like that's a really strong document. And I'm just going to say, there is no compromise in my mind. We're going to have that road. And so Southwest has sued us, you know, through a sue and settle agreement. You know, they've gotten their way. We're now suing the federal government over some of their processes. We will sue them again. We will prevail. And, um, you know, if we have a change in administration, we'll probably do exactly what they did, which is the DOJ will settle with us and the road will be built. We already have the right of way secured. The, anyway, we could go on and on. But I, I feel why, like where the compromise has been is the compromise has been the sensitivity to the actual habitat, right?
Yeah.
So making sure that we're not disrupting the tortoise habitat, doing what we can. There will be some neighborhoods that, that are impacted. But what those neighborhoods in, in that part of Washington City need to know is that that road's already existing up to a point. It just hasn't started crossing.
Yeah.
And I can't necessarily help that, that they didn't know that there was a road plan there for 30 years.
Right.
Before their house got there. But I think once the road's built.
I've been here since 2015.
Yeah.
I've heard about the northern corridor. It's not like I had to do that much. Yeah. It wasn't a mystery to me, you know, and so if they, if they're getting lied to by a developer and real estate agent, that sounds like a great lawsuit to, to take to them. However, I would also say, uh, you know, there's roads everywhere, people. There's roads everywhere. And, and so is it going to impact some people? Yes. Is it going, is it going to have a monument, monumental impact on traffic? Um, not currently, but as we continue to expand, as we continue to grow, which we inevitably will, it will for sure be beneficial, especially for the west side. And I'm thinking of Black Desert and, you know, trying to pull 10,000 people that are going to be visiting there across the county and not straight down St. George Boulevard or through bluff where people need those roads to.
Yeah. When we, when you look at the numbers on some of these road, you know, the, the vehicles per day.
Yeah.
We're going to continue to see some growth and, and I think Black Desert is an exciting property. Um, it's exciting to see the PGA come here.
I just walked the resort, um, the resort center yesterday. Holy cow, man.
It's taken it all to a new level. We started this conversation talking about hospitality.
It's a, it's a, it's a New York, it's a New York city, uh, Los Angeles, uh, uh, it's a high, high level.
Yeah.
Venue. It's, it's, it's unlike anything St. George has even remotely ever seen.
Yeah, we have no property like this.
Not even close to it.
If, if you've been to, you know, say you've been to the Gaylord at, at the Opryland or someplace like that, it's, it's not quite that property, but it's, it's that type of property.
Yes, caliber.
Very high caliber property. Um, one of my big concerns is the traffic studies that, that are, because I love that Snow Canyon Parkway. I, I think it's a beautiful road. When you drive it, you think, and I've, you know, for years I've thought this. I've thought hats off to the city of St. George and Ivans for having vision on that road. And I think we have other parkways like that. I would say the Southern Parkway is a beautiful road. I like these roads that we're building that have a certain amount of beauty to them. At the same time, they're, they're a road.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have other challenges. For example, uh, SR nine into Hurricane.
Yeah.
It's, uh, you know, sometimes I take for granted that people don't drive it all the time like I do. But it's starting to get what you call to collapse. Other words, if you have to wait for more than one light to get through a light, you have a, a kind of a, a collapse on your, your hand, right?
Yeah.
And we're starting to see that at the end of Boulevard. We're starting to see that other places. But for example, getting back to, to SR nine, we're going to have to come through there, put overpasses. We're going to have to put, you know, frontage roads. Basically from where, if, if the listener or somebody knows, basically where you get on to the Southern Parkway to the freeway is eventually going to become a Parkway, SR nine will. Two hundred million dollars. I mean, that's really the price tag that we're looking at right now to get us there, but we absolutely have to have it. You need to be able to get without stoplights, you know?
Right.
And so we're going to continue to work on these problems as we grow. You know, we're one of the fastest growing metropolitan areas. I'm not a pro-growth guy, but I'm a pro-human guy.
Yeah.
You know, we all have kids. We all want them to prosper. You know, if we don't have kids, we know somebody that does. Um, we want our younger generations to, to prosper in this county. And so we as, as, uh, those in decision-making, we have to do everything we can to put the infrastructure in for them to prosper and for businesses to prosper.
Yeah.
For people to live their lives in a quality way. So the, the northern parkway for me, the northern corridor is really just, it, it's part of the critical infrastructure to get people from east to west and vice versa. Everybody from Santa Clara want it. Everybody from Ivans, anybody from Hurricane, just to get us across town.
I, I think of to your point, if you take Snow Canyon, uh, Parkway and you say, I'm going to, I'm going to build a road that's a, a nice, I mean, Red Hill, Red, uh, Red Hills Parkway. It's a beautiful road. And so I, I'm with you in, you know, if, if conserve Southwest Utah is concerned, I think, uh, she continued to drive home fire, the danger of fire and, and roads causing fires. And in my mind, I'm like, these are things that in the design and in the, in the building of the road, we can take some of these things into account. We can, we can set these things up to where, you know, um, having, having a couple of cameras to, to early detection if there's, there's a, uh, a chain that sparks a fire somewhere, right? Like there's, there's a few things that we can do to really mitigate the problems and having a road out there could actually help get fire. And this is one, one of my arguments is like, well, if we put a road out there, because the fires, you, they told me there was a bunch of fires out there, you know, over the last five years, having a road out there helps us get to the fire quicker and to stop it faster, right? Like, I mean, that's, there is a key element to that.
Well, I, as long as we're on this topic.
I know.
I'm totally with you. Like the road doesn't cause fire. The road will actually prevent fire because you'll be able to be out there. You'll be able to buffer it. And there's.
It's weird. She just kept, they, they kept bringing that up. And I was like, I just don't, I, I'm not sure.
Well, it's because in their lawsuit, they basically, that was the one thing they said fire hadn't been studied. It had. And then the other thing is that they said that the tribes hadn't been properly consulted with. They had, and the reason the tribes, there's two stages.
The Chivalits?
Yeah, there's two stages of consultation. One is to say, you know, we're going to build a road. What do you think about it? Blah, blah, blah. And they, they, uh, involve themselves. And then the second is once you go to design, making sure that you're not destroying archaeological areas and you're sensitive to that. So that second phase was going to come. But the one thing about fire, a couple of things. One, we've had two years of reasonable, good rainfall. Our reservoirs are good and, and we've seen it. But 18 of the last 20 years before were historic drought levels. In fact, the, what was it? It's now two years ago. That year would have been a 1,200 year drought if you were doing like tree rings. That's how bad.
Didn't we do like 280 days without a single drop of rain or something like that? I was there. I was like, I, I want a cloud. I just need a cloud. Just one cloud. It was crazy.
It was just like, you can't take that much sunshine without a cloud.
Yeah.
So fire is there for a reason. Or, you know, during that time, you really can't judge based on that.
Yeah.
Because the drought impacts. I'll tell you something else they're not talking about with, with the tortoise is the raven. The raven is, is a bird that comes in, it's protected. We, we've got to be very careful what we do with ravens. And ravens love those little tortoises. They love, you know, getting them.
And they're ninjas. They're, they're super smart ninjas.
And so guess what? Now we're out there literally spraying raven nest eggs. We finally got permission to spray their eggs. And it, it causes it so that oxygen doesn't come out and they don't, they're not procreating as much.
Just, yeah.
But it's things like that where there's this contradiction on what to do with endangered species. You know, it's like, well, we got to protect the species. Okay. Well, what's the threats? Humans. Well, there's a lot of other threats. Well, no, humans is the only one. In other words, we don't want any bike riders out there. We don't want any hunters, you know? Anyway, you get the point. So. And back to county government, we actually run what's called the HCP, the Habitat Conservation Area. So we have Cameron Rogan. He's a great tortoise biologist. And in conjunction with the BLM, we actually have input on the management of the reserve, which I think is really good for the citizens. I think if Washington County wasn't involved to that level, you wouldn't have your trail accesses and other things. Cause the BLM would just shut it all down. But, but anyway, it's, it's kind of something, a dynamic that we have to deal with here in the county. People might wonder, you know, why is it that the county's involved in that stuff? If we weren't involved in endangered species and threatened and sensitive areas, there would be no other growth.
It's, it's, it's so funny that I like that you say, stated that because, um, it's easy to, if I'm, if I'm a environmentalist organization and I'm saying, I want to rally around this cause because this tortoise thing, come join me because the county is, is trying to destroy it.
Yeah.
And you go back in time to when we first realized that the tortoise is like this, you know, protected class. The county's like, let me take the torch in helping this tortoise. Let's protect this land here and this land here. And, and we were all, all about the county helping then. Right? And it's like the county was, you know, all on board, the entire community. We were all, you know, uh, there was consensus among the entire communities before I was here, that this is, this is an important thing. Let's protect our favorite places in the county at the same time. So we, we all get together and now enough times passes like, oh, now the county's the enemy and trying to destroy this. Like, nah, that's not, that's not how this thing unfolded. It's just, you're just taking this one little snippet in time because you moved here, you know, four years ago. And back to where we just kind of started, it's like, there's, you know, Southern Utah knows how to manage water. If you're coming here and you're raising alarms about water, it's like, yeah, yeah, man. We've been talking about water since 1898, you know? It used to be too much water. Now it's not enough water, but we've always had a water conversation, you know?
That's.
And, and it's, it's, it's really interesting to me, but you know, uh, the local population, right? Getting them to understand all of those dynamics, especially when they're turning over all the time. My county, uh, so I'm the county delegate for the Republican Party. Ivan seven has 680, it's like 680 uh, Republican, uh, uh, yeah, voters. Um, two, two of them have been registered Republicans in the state of Utah, uh, before 2019.
Two of them. That is crazy. You know, we have.
But for 2019, that's how brand new that, that precinct is, right? 600 residents. And two of them in that precinct have lived here before 2019.
That is crazy. And talking about our population, our, our citizens, we have so many good people that move here. And, um, a lot of them are political refugees. In other words, they, they moved here for a reason. They did their homework and they said, I need to get out of crazy town.
Yeah.
And where is there a place where I can find like-minded, freedom-minded people that's warm?
Yeah.
And I'm going to Southern Utah. So, and, but it is, it is a challenge for those of us in public policy to basically, um, give the information to everybody because it is changing. And, and, uh, a little bit more about the tortoise that people might find a little bit curious. So, so Cameron has been so good using technology. We talked about this technology thing. So in the debate about the road, they said, if you build that road across the habitat, you're going to basically bisect the population. So the tortoises won't be able to, you know, intermingle. And so we talked about what we could do bridges. They even said, well, maybe you can do an elevated road. I have no idea how much that would cost. But then Cameron Rogan goes out and puts simple cameras on all of our culverts. Cause they said, no, they'll never go into a culvert. These cameras show these tortoises going through these culverts all the time. They love the, the culverts. They live in the culverts. The point of it is, is there's inexpensive options to solve the problem. Then we used to do this, um, and the state was kind of our nemesis on this as well, where they'd go out and do these tortoise counts, right? So people would walk across the, the landscape, you know, so many feet from each other and you'd find a tortoise and note it down. Well, Cameron goes, look, we have drone technology. You know, there's these drone contractors that'll come out and fly the, the area.
Just pick them out.
And, and we had, you know, biologists from the BLM and biologists from state DNR. It's like, oh no, you know, boo hoo and that. And Cameron's like, let me try it. So much more effective, picking up so many more tortoises.
Yeah.
And, and then.
I saw some article from, I think it was the Deseret News or something. It's like, uh, you know, tortoise population in Southern Utah, uh, on the verge of collapse. I think it was the headline. I was like, what? No way. There's no way that's accurate. Just because you, you walked out in the desert at one point and you, you only counted a few. There's no way.
I think what it was is it was, it was conserve South, Southwest. They had to do their own count.
It had to be.
But there's no, I mean, that's not how you count tortoises. So for example, the.
Or it's just one way of counting the tortoises. It's like, that's okay. You did the one. We did one too. And look at all of these here. So it's, it's not, it's not one side or the other, right?
And we've also been doing studies, we get back to the ravens where we'll take and put out a little, um, kind of a mock, uh, tortoise shell, put a camera on it. You know, a string. Sure enough, the ravens are coming in, they're picking it up. So we're able to kind of do these studies on the tortoise population, on how we're going to preserve it. So.
Yeah.
We have endangered plants, endangered other things. It does affect, um, government here and, and infrastructure. It increases our costs. I mean, we're millions of dollars.
I had no idea. I had no idea that our development permit for the entire county is contingent upon protecting those tortoises.
Yeah.
I had no idea. I was like.
Because if we didn't have that permit in place, what would happen is if you had prime habitat for tortoises and you wanted to develop, you would have to go negotiate directly with Fish and Wildlife Service, which would be just, it'd be a nightmare.
Yeah.
Sitla or some bigger outfits could do it, but private couldn't do it. And we, we just wouldn't. It would grind development or any sort of prosperity to.
Yeah.
To, to complete all.
Yeah, yeah. That, that was just so fascinating to me. And, and so it, it isn't, it, I would say this, after all the conversations we've had, we've had about this. It's important to everybody that the tortoise is protected, that we understand the land that we have.
Yep.
Preserving all the land and all the heritage. It, that is important to everybody.
Yeah.
And are, are there some concessions that we need to make in what's best for the county? It's not an easy decision, but it, it, it's required.
Yeah.
And so, um, you know, being able to move forward though, I think is, is the thing that we have to figure out a way to push forward. And going back to that, that book, you know, the constitution and these, these avenues of government are supposed to help facilitate us to march forward. We don't have to race forward, but continue to make progress forward. And it seems like in this post-COVID, uh, political environment, it seems like a lot of people are just trying to put up roadblocks. They're like, they want to just stop things from happening, right? And, and we, we're not going to be able to dig ourselves out of the national debt by stopping things that, you know, there's, we're not going to be able to save our way into, out of debt, right? There's no way. You can't save your way. If you're already in debt, you can't save your way. You have to grow. We have to grow ourselves out of it, right? And so, you know, you had mentioned where you're not pro-growth and I'm assuming you're not pro, uh, death either, right? So it's, it's how do we just handle the, the growth responsibly?
Yeah.
Being, being, we've covered a bunch of different things. What do you think is, uh, what's right in front of the county right now? What's a, what's a big push that you're seeing, you know, across the municipal, state level? Where, where do you feel like we're in, you know, all hands on deck for one particular issue or two or two issues?
That's a, that's a great question. There's, there's one issue that is, I don't know that we have an answer to, but it is, it is the one that keeps me up the most. And that's the cost of living and the cost of housing. And, um, we don't really have a plan for that. We've been convening, you know, the housing authority, the housing action committee hack, as they call it. Um, we had a meeting with some of our top business leaders. Um, it's been a couple of months. We've had a couple of meetings like this. And some people that you would know that are very prominent in our community, we were actually there to talk about venture capital and how we get more venture capital for businesses in Southern Utah. But it was a free conversation. First rattle out of the box, what are we going to do about housing?
Yeah.
If, if I couldn't, if I didn't, if I wasn't. If, if I couldn't, if I didn't, if I wasn't successful, my grandkids couldn't even stay here. If they didn't have a grandpa that could help them out. That was a comment from one of our prominent business leaders.
Right.
I don't know what we do about that. It's a problem across, across the country. But I, I think that's a challenge. I graduated from Hurcan High School in 1989. And I like to say that I already said that I was the youngest in my family. I was one of the first that could stay here if I wanted to, because there was enough jobs. Now our young kids want to stay here, but they can't afford to live here.
Yeah.
So that is a challenge. Water, we've already hit on. The transportation issues that we've hit on. I do, I, I need to clarify that I'm not anti-growth either. I'm just not, I'm just not a growth.
I heard you, I heard you say that, but I, I think I knew what you meant, but I don't know.
I am not anti-growth, but we need to grow without losing our soul. So the culture of our county, this, this, you know, what has brought us together and you're a pioneer, whether you are like me, that's lived here for five generations, or whether you're a first generation pioneer that just moved here.
Yeah. My wife and I, we didn't know anybody. I literally didn't know a single human in Washington County when we moved here.
So you're a pioneer.
So it's like, yeah, we just, and a lot of people are that way. They're like, yeah, we just picked it on the map and we just showed up. You know, and, and that, to your point, that's, that's the definition of a pioneer.
Exactly. So when you see, for example, the county, we're really involved in Liberty Week this, this week. You know, as we celebrate American independence, um, we have formed, uh, America 250 Committee. Cause in 2026, America will sell, celebrate the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. We've declared ourselves America's county. The reason we've done all that, we're not trying to, you know, grandstand or anything. But we kind of want to plant the flag right here in, in Washington County. That, you know, it's not that we want to be, um, separate from others. We want other counties to join us. But we want to declare ourselves as a county that really cares about, you know, kind of the ideals, the goodness of America. There's so much that divides us and, um, you know, it doesn't seem that Washington DC knows how to bring us together, but maybe Washington County, we, we're talking about the power of local government. So that's something that is kind of front and center to, to us as myself. It's something I care deeply about. One thing that I also care deeply about that I want to keep focused on is public safety.
Yeah.
You know, you're starting to see some of these big cities that just, you can't give up on it, right? You can't, there was a time when Rome fell where they just throw, threw open the doors and allowed the, the Visigoths and the, the Vandals and everybody just to come in and sack Rome.
Yeah.
You cannot give up to criminal activity, right? So, so we have a very robust attitude.
Even at the smallest level. I mean, I think we've, we've played this case study out over and over. And, you know, New York in the eighties, right? It's, we don't have to look far away where you give the, a tiny little inch and, you know, uh, uh, a thief is going to steal. You know, and they're, they're going to feel like they have the mandate to do it if they don't. If, if there's no consequence to that, we can't, we can't give up the line. And, and a lot of cities across the country gave up the line for like a year and a half. And it's gotten out of control.
Well, it's, it's kind of a sign of our times, right? As we've become a less religious culture.
Yeah.
The, the one thing that religion does, regardless of your denomination, is it kind of gives you a guide in your life. As, as more and more young people kind of grow up without that, that we start to see, you know, more antisocial behavior. And, uh, that's just my commentary on it.
Yeah.
But I think, I think the statistics would show that we need to continue to hold the line on, hey, antisocial behavior isn't, isn't, uh, isn't accepted here. For years, for like the first six years I was a county commissioner, we never had a murder in, in Washington County. We were just, you know, we were kind of on a, on a, it wasn't that we didn't have murder, you know, but, but we hadn't had it per population. Of course, now we've had three in the last, you know, few days. I think all three of these are terrible, terrible tragedies. They're not representative of our community. The details of them aren't.
Yeah.
And so anyway, I do think that we're, we're a good wholesome civil, you know, community. I, I love my neighbors, but it is something that I worry about. I want Washington County to grow and be the great place that, that I grew up in, that I love.
Yeah.
So those are kind of the things that keep me awake. Um, you know, keep us kind of going forward. There's a lot of things going on in the county. We are, speaking of this public safety thing, we're, we're doing a major expansion on our jail. We were able to use some of that ARPA money that came.
Yeah.
To do that. So we don't have to raise taxes to, to put, you know, a medical wing and about 60 new beds in the jail. We were able to do that county building that people see that we built, we're able to do it by saving, you know? And so I think we're, we're almost.
Staying ahead of growth still, right? It's like this, this, these, some of these things are needed in advance, right? We have to anticipate these needs ahead of time. And by doing it without raising taxes is, is not an easy thing to do. It's, it's a very tough thing to do.
And, uh, some people might, as you're driving down Boulevard, right next to Iceberg, uh, we have that old, it was an old, it used to be a furniture store years ago.
Yeah.
But the county bought it. We're getting, we're in the middle of a major remodel. The federal court is going to rent most of that. And then we'll have our justice court. We run the justice court.
Yeah.
For St. George City. So we have a lot of kind of, um, building, you know, that the county's still involved in. As, as we're working on different stuff. So.
Well, hey man, I, I appreciate you coming on. We, we could wrap, wrap for today. I'm, I'm excited for the fourth of July. Tomorrow's fourth of July. So happy independence, everybody. Independence Day. Uh, thanks for, um, serving like you have, man. It's not an easy job. The, the commissioner role seems like a massive job. And, uh, like it can't be easy.
It's a real honor and, and thank you for everything you do. I mean, people need good places to get information. So hopefully we have, uh, it's just one, kept people somewhat entertained.
Yeah, maybe they got bored, but I, I, a lot of times this is just for me to think through some of these things and it's just thoughts that I have in my head. I'm like, what is, what do they think about this, right? And I think a lot of people do too. So hopefully they get some value out of it.
People, you know, at least they can go to sleep. Maybe this could be an insight.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Sometimes I put podcasts in at night when I.
That's right. You just put in a 1.5 speed and we'll talk really fast and then you'll.
I have to listen at regular speed.
Yeah.
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 It's just a little too weird for me. But anyway, it's been an honor.
Yeah. Have a great, have a great week. Everybody. Hope you enjoyed the episode. We'll see you guys out there.